Let's call this meeting to order. We've got the January fifteenth meeting of the Concord City Planning Board. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Uh, Dina Tondo Dimitraki. Counselor Brent Todd.
Present.
David Fox.
Here.
Jeffrey Santa Cruz.
Here.
Amanda Savage.
Here.
Matthew Hicks.
Here.
Teresa Rosenberg. And Rich Woodman.
Here.
All right, first and foremost on our agenda tonight is to elect a Chair and Vice Chair. We'll open those up to anybody that would like to throw their hat in the ring or have their hat summarily thrown in the ring. Everybody's here, so nobody gets to throw it at somebody that doesn't want to.
I will make a motion to elect Rich Woodman as the Chair for this year.
Second.
That's been made and roundly seconded. Do we have any other motions? Any other people that want to step forward? Really? It's a fun job.
Good job.
No?
You make it fun, that's why.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Well, I'll return the favor and make a motion to appoint Matt Hicks as the Vice Chair.
Second.
Second.
Any other folks would like to throw their hat in the ring? Let the move yours, Teresa. No.
I've been thrilled.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, so we're here for another year. Yay! All right, let's move on to the first item on our agenda is approval of the December eighteenth minutes. Would someone like to make a motion to approve those minutes as submitted?
No motion.
Staff with comments.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Quick agenda overview tonight. We have items eight B and eight D. Eight B is an unaddressed Shaker Road minor subdivision, a minor site plan, and CUP. And eight D is twelve to Honto Street, a minor subdivision lot line adjustment at the request of the applicants. For both of those projects, they'd like to continue those to the February nineteenth Planning Board meeting. Would someone like to make a motion to continue both of those, both of those, both of those items until the February nineteenth meeting?
So moved. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And item eight A, seventy-two Manchester Street, which is a minor site plan, at the request of the applicant, has been asked to move that to the March nineteenth meeting. Would someone like to make a motion to move item eight A on the agenda to our March nineteenth meeting?
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Just for the record, if you keep in score, so that eight B, eight D, and eight A have all been removed from tonight's agenda. First item on the, on our, on our extensive agenda here is design review applications by consent. Any member of the board have any items they want to pull from consent agenda? Address the audience and tell you if anybody have any items you want to pull from consent. If not, we'll take a motion to approve items five A, five B, five C, and five D from the, on the agenda under consent. Would someone like to make a motion to approve those with architectural design review recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, so we're all set. You're good. You came for nothing, but we appreciate you coming in. Took up a seat. Now, somebody that's waiting, come and sit. All right. Let's move on to our item six A on our agenda tonight. If we could read item six A into the record.
Um, Rich.
Yes.
I just need to recuse myself from this one.
Certainly.
So do I need to step in?
You do. You do. Yeah, I'm sorry.
For business.
For business conflict of interest.
Business conflict, yep. Okay, let's read item six A into the record. And for the record, Amanda Savage has recused herself from any conversations regarding this application.
Nobis Group, on behalf of Bangor Savings Bank, requests approvals for a major site plan application, architectural design review, conditional use permit application for driveway separation, and certain waivers from the site plan regulations for the new construction of a three thousand six hundred seventy-two square foot bank at one eleven Loudon Road in the general commercial district.
Okay, so this is a determination completeness. No public hearing tonight on this. We do have pages of concerns regarding determination of completeness. And again, in our ongoing, our ongoing efforts spearheaded by Matt Hicks, might I say, to find applications complete when they're complete and not, and not move forward unless the application's complete. If you read through the, the information here, there's extensive things missing from this. And we received notification from the Nobis Group, I imagine through their attorney, that it was minor and we should be pushing this through and determining complete because there is a hardship on the applicant. And if they were here, I'd tell them the same thing. I'm sorry, but, you know, the applications need to be complete when they come into staff so staff can do their job and the clock starts ticking at that point. If anybody has any thoughts or processes or any concerns about it, I'm happy to discuss them and bang them around the table, but based on the determination completeness components that are missing on here, it's not just one or two little items that we kind of say, let's staff decide that. There's some significant things in here that determine height and different things that need to happen. So I'll make the motion, unless we have any other discussion on it, that we not find the application complete, not set the public hearing and wait until the application is complete.
Second.
Is that appropriate? In the way I, way I framed that?
Just say it's determined complete because it doesn't contain all the elements required by the site plan regulations.
That's what I said.
I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, so that is not determined complete. We'll notify the applicant that we'll have to come back in the February meeting to determine it complete. I'm not opposed, for the record. If we do determine it complete and have a public hearing in the same meeting, we could do that, I guess.
Okay.
If you guys have gone through it and there's, there's no issues. If there's issues, then we'll wait.
Okay. I'll let them know to get a waiver in for that.
Yep. And then again, that's not something, you know, we, something we've done before, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so that moves us out of the determination completeness by consent and moves us into our expansive public hearing section. And again, most of those items have been taken out, but let's read item C into the record if we could.
Richard D. Bartlett and Associates LLC, on behalf of Alden Place Condominium Owners Association, requests approvals for a minor subdivision application to eliminate platted convertible land area and make it platted common area, and certain waivers from the subdivision regulations at six McKinley Street, one Matthews Street, and three ten South Main Street in the neighborhood residential district.
Okay, so this application was continued to tonight's meeting. It was found complete, I believe, correct?
Correct.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing.
No, we need a motion.
We need a motion to...
To determine it complete and not a development of regional impact.
It says that right here on my little agenda. Oh, it does.
Page two.
Oh, it says it right there. Okay, so we'll take a motion to determine the application complete, not a development of regional impact. Someone like to make that motion?
Move.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, so we'll open the public hearing. Any staff update on this, or we can let Mr. Sargent take over?
We are recommending approval of the requested waivers and a conditional approval of the application.
Great. Welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name's Mark Sargent, and I am with Richard Bartlett and Associates. And I'm here representing Alden Place Condominium. I don't, I think most people are familiar with this particular site located three ten South Main Street. Also has frontage on McKinley and Dunkley and has ten existing condo units. So at one time when this was originally proposed back in the eighties, there was three phases or four phases, three phases. And phase two and phase three were kind of closer to South Main Street. When the condo plan was recorded, they were recorded as convertible land. Those thoughts of converting that land are now gone, so the owners would like to revise the condo plan and eliminate the convertible property. So it's, it's that simple.
That simple?
It is very simple.
If it was only that simple.
You said it. You said it.
Okay, it is that simple. I mean, it doesn't look like there's a lot there. Questions, concerns regarding this application from any member of the board? If not, we can close the public hearing and... Where am I here? It's an awful long report for such a little, little piece. So we'll use our findings of fact, the information that we received tonight, the testimony heard from the applicant, and the contents of the packet of info as our findings of fact to make our decision. Item eight point two, is that the first item on my list of things to do here is to grant the waivers requests below? I'm not going to list them all, but they're listed in your packet under eight A through J. Would someone like to make a motion to grant those waiver requests as outlined?
No, madam. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Eight point three is to grant minor subdivision approval for the condominium subdivision amendment to eliminate platted convertible land and make it platted common area at six McKinley Street, one Matthews Street, and three ten South Main Street as submitted, subject to the following conditions. Those are outlined in precedent conditions, one, A through G, two, three, four, five, six, and seven, and subsequent conditions, one through four. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that minor subdivision approval as outlined?
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You're all set. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you.
You have to stay just so we got somebody.
Company here.
It's not silly that we're talking, we're talking to an empty room.
Only here.
So you gotta stay, you gotta stay, otherwise it's gonna echo.
It's always a pleasure to be here.
Thank you, Mark, for coming, and we'll let you go.
But, yeah, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. See, item eight C on the agenda, you're out at seven twelve, so mark that down. All right, we'll move on. Again, item eight D was, was continued, so that moves us on to nine A, a request. Why don't we read that into the record if we could?
Okay.
Not here, but...
This is a request from Stephen M. Dupree and others to modify city easements located at thirty-one and thirty-three Samuel Drive, as well as permission to landscape and maintain the vegetated area within the center of the cul-de-sac at Samuel Drive, as referred to the planning board, as well as Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, Transportation Policy Advisory Committee, General Services Department, and Community Development Department by City Council on November twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
You can thank them for that. So the request, again, I'm not going to read it, you guys will get it as part of your packet. I don't know if there's a staff update or, I mean, it seems like a cluster messy thing to, to be dealing with. I wish the applicant was here, but...
Good first word.
Sure, let's take some public testimony. Let's open the public hearing.
I was hoping for that. It's Mark Sargent again. You know, we did the survey for Steve out there, but Steve asked me to text him when I was coming up because he thought there wasn't going to be another hearing after me before he was coming here, so he, he plans to be here.
Okay.
Ah.
I did text him, so, and he responded, so he should be here shortly.
On his way.
He's on his way. He's just up there, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. You don't have anything to add, though, to it. Okay, thank you. From a staff update, then, any, any, anything we should be looking at, talking about? The vegetation intrigues me. I don't know if that infringes on easements or makes any changes, or I don't know.
All right, the only thing I will just add, which is, I believe in the staff memo, if, if the decision by City Council is to do anything with the easement, the easement was a condition of approval for the original plat.
Right.
So if the easement is removed, they'll have to apply for an amendment to the plat.
Okay. Okay, record time. Mr. Dupree, welcome to the table.
Thank you. You guys are hauling tonight.
Yeah, we're moving through.
We were.
Moving through. Smart to have Mr. Sargent text you. That was, he, he stalled for you for a little bit of time, so he came...
Well, I, I keep him engaged enough that he probably...
Well, welcome, welcome to the table. If you could, if you could, if you could state your name for the record.
Yes, I'm Steve Dupree.
All right.
At thirty-one Samuel Drive. Just my way of background.
Take your time.
Take a breath.
When, when this subdivision was done by Cardinal builders, I think, they created a thirty-five foot wide city easement from the bottom end of Samuel over to what I call the water line, the northwest bypass. We've got a sewer line, a water line through there, and the city needs a thirty-five foot easement. So I didn't buy the house not knowing there was a thirty-five foot wide easement. It's fine. People use it, neighbors use it. It, it's great. Unfortunately, in these contentious times, at least twice after I moved into the neighborhood, protesters showed up at my house. I think you know from past engagements, there have been some people who have different views about some of my tenants, like T-Todler and like that. And it's a public easement, so they can stand twenty-four feet, I measured it, double-checked it, that's one of the reasons I was a little late doing it with the flashlight, twenty-four feet from my corner of my house in my living room. And they can yell, as long as they don't do it so persistently, they've committed an offense, and they can stand there as long as they stay within easement with offensive signs. And that's happened on a couple occasions, which, as you can imagine, makes me really welcome in the neighborhood. My poor neighbor is directly next to me, the Kates, who are wondering who moved in. So what made sense to me and to my neighbors, the Kates, Kateses, and to our other, other neighbors, was that we defined the pedestrian easement. Over on the southwest corner of the circle, there is a paved easement pass connecting Samuel Drive to Little Pond Road that works fine. It's not ADA compliant, I do not believe. It's four and a half feet wide. So I asked my attorney to contact the city attorney to see if the city would be amenable to defining just the pedestrian part of the easement to some area so that, one, it would keep them farther away from my house and the Kate's house. By the way, the easement within five feet of their house, they haven't been picked on or protested for anything. We heard back from the city attorney that the city was opposed. That was the letter. The city was opposed. City's big operation, no detail who was opposed or why. So I wrote a letter to the City Council saying, gee, I'd like the City Council to consider this. Within twenty-four hours, Matt Walsh, the deputy city manager, responded and gave us a couple reasons. And the concerns expressed by Matt Walsh were, one, it might be wetlands; two, the city might want an ADA path that was compliant, and that the width would be too narrow. That was the first we heard of any objections, very legitimate objections and concerns. The City Council then referred it to all the different departments, planning, T-PAC, engineering, I think, either through planning, and then depending on, then back to the City Council for consideration. So what we undertook to do, it was referred to city staff, we got the report from Ms. Marie Skinner, which you have, which says engineering has concerns, and we might want wider, might need ten feet. And then a concern that if you narrowed the pedestrian easement to ten feet and you needed to repair it or alter it, well, you only have a ten-foot pedestrian easement, although I think that argument doesn't hold just because you have thirty-five feet wide easement for municipal utilities, and this would be considered one, and frankly, it would be happy, the Kate and myself, to write into the easement that if you needed to use your thirty-five feet to repair the ten feet or six feet or eight feet, whatever, would be fine. Before winter set in, we did a wetland study, which we can refresh. Any of you blocked out there know there's a lot of fill. If you are walking in the easement towards the water line at what I would call the southeast corner, there is a wetland during, in part of the city's, but it's nowhere near where there's the risen covered area. So there's no wetland where the path is. And then I just asked, the heck of it, I asked Bartlett surveys and Will Cox and Barton to say, gee, is this a problem to design, you know, one that'd be ADA compliant? Ironically, the street, the street isn't ADA compliant, and there's no sidewalk down the street, but theoretically, you could roll down the street in your wheelchair and get onto an ADA path. So they did a design, which wouldn't lock into, but just to show it's actually pretty easy to make an ADA compliant path. pretty easy to make an ADA compliant path. I have experience with pavement, I would recommend the city do not impervious pavement, do like we've done at our hotels, where you make it pervious pavement, but in any event, that, it's obviously very easy to design, whether it's 6 feet, or 8 feet, or 10 feet, a pedestrian easement that goes within the 35 feet, that hopefully is closer to the center line. As you know, when you have an easement, you can plant an easement, you can, you can put plantings there in an easement area. An easement doesn't turn property over to the city, but it's very clear that if you plant in a city easement, or you put some, you're not supposed to put any structures, but if you plant and then the city has to remove it to take care of their easement, that's your problem. And that's fine, that happens all over town. So, my only point was that it would be good for my neighbors if you'd said to me when I moved in that I'd have people stand 24 feet away, holding up signs, that comment on everything from whether I like...
You don't have to give us the details.
But, you've all heard them.
Yeah, we don't want to do that.
So, that's the, that's the only goal, and I think it's easy to do, I don't think it's a heavy lift, there are lots of different routes, and that was the intent there. And I've had it surveyed, I've had it surveyed twice, I've had it staked three times, we've had this designed, I think I'm now into it for about $15,000, just to define. And by the way, there is, if you go out there, you'll see that it is packed where people walk, and they walk right down the center, because they're trying to respect the privacy of the Kateses and myself. It's just that the people who don't want to do that can stand 24 feet away, and I didn't include this in the package, but I, today when I was fetching my garbage barrels, I put one 24 feet away, and that's, that's how close they can stand at my house and hold up signs and yell. So, that was the goal.
Well, those are making their way around, I just need to do a house cleaning here, and if you can bear with me just for a sec. So, in our packets, we've got a few different pieces and puzzles, and I just wanna make sure I'm looking at the latest of everything. We've got the request, which is the email that John Arnold sent, your, your item, which is titled "Dupree Proposed Easement Plat," which was a sidewalk easement prepared for New Hampshire Housing Revocable Trust and Kate's family. So, that's in there. We've got a memo from staff that isn't dated. Is that updated? Is that...
That's the memo that was...
The first memo, the one you have of August 29th is back when Little, it wasn't Cardinals, Cherry Hill Homes built it.
Now, this is a city staff memo from Anne-Marie to...
That was included in the packet, so...
In the packet, okay. And then the city administration email from Matt Walsh, and then subdivision plans, planning minutes, engineering division from 2005, engineering comments. So, I got, we got an email regarding, to the entire board, regarding the revised easement engineering comments from Peter regarding, as you know, Steve Dupree requested modification to the pedestrian easement at his property at 31 Samuel Drive. He submitted a plan earlier today, so that's dated January 14th, which was yesterday. Is that, is that in here?
I forwarded it.
It was forwarded to everybody, and again, I'm not stuck on that design. The objection raised by the city was they wanted to make sure they could have an ADA compliant sidewalk. We did one originally, and the purpose of this one was to show that it's easily achievable. It's a pretty minor cut and fill.
So, just, sorry to interrupt, but I just, again, I don't have a plan attached to this email, so is that not in the packet?
It's not in the packet.
Okay.
Okay, I forwarded it. Obviously, we've had to go out and design this again, and that took some time, hence, we didn't, we got the city's memo from the planning department just recently, and as a result of that, we went out and then showed another typical design. That's why it wasn't in the packet, I think it was pretty short to try and turn around to design. And again, we're not stuck on the design, other than to show you can put a 10-foot wide easement near the center line of a 35-foot wide utility easement, and meet ADA grade, and be able to service it.
Steve's plan, I forwarded to you on Monday, the 13th, at 3:10 PM.
Okay, so it's a prior email to Peter.
And again, I'm not stuck on that plan, I'm just trying to show a point. You can put an easement down the middle, meet the ADA, make it 6 feet wide, 10 feet wide, and...
Oh, I did see that, okay. All right, I just wanted to make sure I was all up to date and had...
We would have submitted it earlier, but we did it in reaction to the city planning memo that we got that, you know, was fairly short and said, we still have concerns.
Okay.
Point of question, I guess, is the road that kind of runs that connects between Samuel Drives and this, is that also a city easement, or is that city-owned property?
Sorry, sir.
Dirt road that, or whatever it is that this connects to?
The northwest bypass, the, that's city.
Is that actually owned property or easement?
I think that's a waterman easement, let me check.
So, here's my question. Does a city-owned easement prevent public access? Because if not, what's the difference of whether it's a 6-foot wide, a 10-foot wide, a 20-foot wide pedestrian easement, if the public is allowed in the 35 easement anyways?
I can answer that. Having designed Governor's Wood, Shakara Village, and Canterbury Meadows, which are all PUDs, back then, what we did is we would dedicate, we have utility easements everywhere, and the city, since Ron Ford was the city engineer, had 35 feet wide, and then we used to do pedestrian easements, particularly if they didn't lie on top of where the utility easement was, would be defined.
And I understand that, Mr. Dupree, what I'm asking is, does a city easement restrict public access in any way?
It can, if it is defined as that. This one defined the pedestrian easement to be the exact same width as the utility easement, which I find to be unusual. I would never draft one that way, I think it was laziness.
I guess, follow-up, Mr. Chairman.
The only way that the pedestrian access would be restricted is if it was a utility easement only.
Right.
Well, see, here's my question. So, we've got a utility easement, but does that, does their wording in our utility easements that says public is restricted? Because if we go from 35 down to 10, and we don't change the underlying utility easement, doesn't that still allow public access?
You're correct. It's a 35-foot wide, I don't know the exact wording, but it is a utility and pedestrian access easement.
Right, and so, if this was just a utility, take out the word pedestrian, if this was just a 35-foot utility easement, which, if I'm understanding, the northwest bypass is, where people walk up and down all the time...
I just clicked on, on that piece of property, and it, it's a piece of property owned by the city.
Okay, here's my question, I'm just trying to make sure that a utility easement, if it was stood on its own, with no word pedestrian, is, does that restrict public access in any way in the easement?
Yes, it's on private property, yes.
Okay, that's all I'm gonna ask.
You're correct.
Counsel Todd.
Yeah, thank you. Similar question, not about restricting access, but is there a way of controlling access? So, for example, is there some precedent where you could enact something that says no standing?
No standing, right? Loitering?
Loitering, no standing, no...
That's, that's a very interesting question, we'll be back before you, because it relates to Capitol Plaza and T-Totler, where that is not a pedestrian easement. I drafted it in 1983, it is a restricted right of passage. Unfortunately, when there were the protests down there, now Judge Kennedy, our lawyer, city's lawyer at the time, told the police, no, you can't move them out of there because it's a pedestrian easement. It is not. Not only that, there's express language that says, I can put a building there over the city utilities, that was granted as part of this whole transaction. They're very different things between a right of passage, a pedestrian easement, and a sidewalk easement. So, for example, when we did the Smile Building and the Bindery Building, we had to have a protracted debate with the city, because they didn't want us to put the buildings back from the building line, thank God we did, because that's what created the parking. We gave a sidewalk easement. There is a substantial amount of legal precedent, which says a sidewalk easement is essentially a public way, it's, it's the public forum. That's very different from a right of passage, or a footpath, they're all different definitions, but a sidewalk easement is like standing out on the State House Square.
I imagine there's some sticky legal scenarios on slip and falls, and things like that, in that, in that, not pedestrian easement, but in that access easement at Capitol Plaza, right?
Yeah, in fact, we even drafted in that one, that we have a right to procure full-time security to patrol it, and the city has to pay half the cost. We haven't gotten to that, actually, we have on a number of occasions, but we've forwarded that bill, but that's a debate for another day.
Counsel Todd.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, I'm bringing it up because, and I was looking for the minutes, but I don't think they're out yet, but when this was brought up at T-PAC, that was part of the discussion, was that there was some thought that this was enacted in other communities, that there would be an ability to enact a no-standing piece to this, so that you could at least control the activity on the right of way.
But, it's just like, it's just like a picketing, I mean, you can't stand, but you can walk back and forth with the sign the same way.
Well, you...
I get it, no, it's a great, it's a start to find a solution.
It's not gonna stop them. I mean, if you saw the signs they held up, you'd be pretty unhappy.
Well, now, I think that, I'm sorry, just, yeah, I was gonna say, now, now, though, they have, as a right, they can stand there all day, if they want, and if you call the police, nothing the police can do about it.
And they can if you walk back and forth.
Yeah, but that's what I'm looking for, is there, is there some legal way that you would be able to restrict that? Because ultimately, really, what you're supposed to have this available for is basically access to the trail, it's supposed to be recreational access, it's not really designed for the purpose for which some people are using it, right?
But, that is such, your city, can you imagine, well, the guy said, well, I was getting ready to walk the easement, I just happened to be carrying a sign saying, Steve Dupree likes kinds of interesting sex, things like that. Seriously.
So, just my question, I have two questions, I'll ask yours as well.
Can you ask mine?
My first question is, what we're being asked to do is to define the footpath.
Right, within the city's utilities.
Define the footpath.
Right.
Right, and so, if the city wants to build the footpath, then this would help define that, that location.
Right.
Okay, that's my first question. Second question was Teresa's question, is your cul-de-sac, is that a city street or a private road?
It's a city street, and in fact, I can only take one battle at a time, this one's been longer, but we have that same issue with the circle.
Right.
The circle's public property. Now, under the city's current homeless process, they remove homeless people from city property, so that wouldn't be an issue, but somebody could stand in the circle, but that's 50 feet away. Yeah.
So, Mike, I have a couple of questions. So, as far as the protesters, the street's public?
Yeah.
So, they can stand in front of the street?
Yes.
And how far is that from your front door?
That's about 30, but I'm going to put plannings, yeah, I'm gonna put, so, I'm waiting to get this all done, hopefully at once, I'm gonna put a planning barrier there, so even though they're another 10 to 12 feet away, they can't come on my property, and I can visually block them.
So, just again, for the...
But, your poor neighbors.
Well, they, it's just the front, yeah, yeah, that's what they say.
For clarification on the photo that you passed around, so you see the cul-de-sac, we see the blue recycling bucket.
That's where somebody could stand.
So, the drive that goes past there is, is not your driveway?
That's correct.
That's the, that's the...
The driveway beyond it is the Kate's driveway, which, by the way, is on, the portion of it's on the city easement.
The driveway?
Yeah, which you can do.
So, just, and it's, it's easy to look at the plans and see things, but when you see them visually like this, so, they could stand on the other side of that tree, in between the bucket and that tree, right in your front yard, basically?
They can stand at the bucket, that's the 24 feet. That's where they stand.
Go ahead, Teresa.
I have another question, and it's not about the bucket, it's about the, the circle. Now, where I live, there's the roundabout right there on Auburn Street, and that, you know, right with Auburn Liberty, yeah, yeah, and that's community, it's, the community does, I mean, the ladies in the neighborhood go plant things, et cetera, I don't, is...
You can do adopt a spot, and that was recommended that we do that for the city circle.
So, you could do that here?
Yeah, if you get the city's permission, you have to come and get permission to do adopt a spot, and that's what was recommended for the city circle.
So, you could do that there?
Yeah.
Okay, but if you adopt the spot, the protesters can be in there as well?
I have no idea what the interplay is between your right to be in city property and in the middle of adopt a spot.
It's still city property, just asking.
Okay, other questions?
That's great.
I read a comment somewhere in here about the fire department wanting a wider sidewalk at 10 feet. I went out there, looked in your windows, thought, no.
Well, you weren't holding up a sign that I remember, but if you were...
So, I was, I saw, I saw the stakes and the flagging and all that, and I could see the other, the water line, whatever we want to call it.
Yeah.
I don't think that the fire department needs 10 feet, 10-foot wide, like, it's pretty open in there as well.
Wide open.
And you, by the time you drive something in there, you can walk somebody out just as quickly. I mean, I don't, it's not like we're in Swope, or we're in Broken Ground Forest, or anything like that, so...
The city occasionally plows the waterline to get to access the waterline, there's a gate there. I mean, there've been emergencies there in the past, there was a homeless person living out on the waterline a couple years ago, had an emergency, and the fire rescue squad comes along and opens the gate and goes up. I, that's, yeah, down there.
10 feet, 10 feet.
The waterline, there's a water lane right here.
And it's almost, Ronnie Ford had a great idea, he was a big believer in the northwest bypass, and when he put the waterline in, it was probably the best widely-built waterline with road base in it, Concord has.
They go down there a lot, that gate is open a lot.
Yeah, I, I think they have to, I don't know anything about water, but they go to the water, they plow it to get close to the water tower right now.
Okay, Jeff.
Whether we go 10 with, you know, one foot holds on each side of gravel, so that you're not going steep slopes right off the, whatever, the biggest issue I see is obviously cut and fill, because if that is a waterline under there, and you do cut, you're now exposing it to frost potential, so, you know, I...
You can build it without cutting and filling, just add fill at the other end. The demonstration was just that it's easy to do.
Right, no, I'm just saying, but it's still gonna be ADA.
Easy to do, this is not a steep hill, it's not nearly as steep as, as the street down to it. It's sort of like, for those of you who have good memories, remember when we built the Hilton True? And we were required to put in an ADA path from the top down to Route 3A, which we've had complaints that the skateboarders use, because it's a great little serpentine thing. It goes onto a street that has no sidewalk, that is not ADA compliant. The only place there's a sidewalk is when you cross the bridge, exit 12, and head back towards town, and the city doesn't plow that in the winter. I mean, it was a complete waste of $60,000, it created a hazard, and has done nothing for any accessibility, so, I mean, we follow the code, we do it, but in this case, it is not hard to build an ADA compliant path. That was the point of showing it, whether it's 6 feet wide, whether it's 10 feet wide, and the city, because they have a 30-foot wide utility easement, can easily say, anytime we need to invade that to maintain our 10-foot wide path. And I'll take a bet on whether there's one built in my lifetime, but I can be hopeful.
Steve, can you put plannings up next to the easement to block, like what you're gonna do in the front, to block anybody from seeing into your house or your yard?
I can put them on my property.
That's what I mean.
And you actually can, is a very interesting question, too, because the easement, and the city's run into this before, an easement is not writing ownership. So, the city's posture historically has been that you, you can't put a building in an easement, but you can do plannings, but by the way, if we have to tear them all down, because we need to, and frankly, the next-door neighbor's driveway, part of it is on the easement.
Right.
And it was approved, and get them in a certificate of occupancy. Now, if somehow, there's nothing, there's nothing over there that's got a utility line under it, but theoretically, the city might need to access that, and they tear it up, and it'd be the Kate's responsibility, just like...
So, that easement, so in other words, well, let me just ask, because you know I know that property, you're gonna build something in front of the house, so they can't see in?
Right.
And then if you came down where the easement is, is that really, I'm not quite so sure, is it 24 feet from your house where the easement is?
Yes.
So, you could put, you could build something from there, basically, I don't know whether you own down to Langley Parkway or not.
I do.
So, you could build, you could put trees up the...
I could put trees up there, I could put at least a six-foot fence, but if it becomes narrowed, what my intention would be to put those trees further out, closer to 10 feet, so that anybody who comes along, holding up the signs, is farther away. That's the goal.
But, if you didn't, you still, if you, if you have big enough trees, or a big enough Or a big enough fence, you can't see in.
Well, you're only allowed to have a six-foot high fence in Concord, so people could all signs up. You have to go get a variance if you want a taller fence. You have to show you have a hardship.
So you can't plant the easement now?
But you could plant any trees.
Yes, you can.
You, you can plant easement now, but because there's no limitation on the 30-foot width, say you planted a rose garden down there, somebody can walk and have the right to trample all over it, because they have the 35 feet. Now, the city, if they need to dig it up, would call you and say, hey, move your rose bushes, or we're tearing them down.
But conceivably, you could, you could plant that now with semi-mature trees, all through that hole, right to the very edge of your property line. Have the Katz's do the same thing, right to the edge of the property line.
But the protesters do not have to respect it.
And the pedestrian easement is still there.
Yeah.
It's just really not accessible unless they wanna walk through the trees, right?
Well-
I mean, I'm just-
Actually, I don't think you can, because there is a pedestrian easement. It's one thing to plant, but if we block the easement by planting, that's a whole different-
And the city, and the city wants to maintain it. The city wants to plow it. The city wants access to it. So, you couldn't, I mean, I'm just trying to get to the other end of the spectrum here on what you can and can't do. You, in theory, could let it, you could grow trees in the-
You could, but no, a protester could walk all over them, 'cause right now, there's 35 feet.
Well, they could get in the trees and look down in your property, even-
Even better. They could see the second floor.
Hang on one second, yeah?
That'll scare them away.
Quick point of correction on fence height. In any residential district, in any side or rear yard, fence up to eight feet in height.
Sorry, sorry, eight feet. There we go. And it also raises, which we've done when we did, I can't remember which PUD, if you build a slope of the land up, so it's a natural slope, three or four feet, and then put an eight-foot fence on it.
Sure. What a burn it. Right. Sorry. Yeah, Matt, go ahead.
So I was just, to your point, Rich, if Steve and the neighbor build, they plant, they're going to be delineating or defining where that footpath is, which is what he's asking to do now, which would clarify, in my mind, would clarify where, clean up where it could go, and then it'd be easier for him to plant, rather than the city coming along and say, we want it here, and we tear out all these trees.
I don't even care if you do that. I just wanted to, even if I planted and the city came along later and said, hey, we don't like that 10-foot design, we're gonna move it this way. We're just trying to get it closer to the center. And if we go and plant, and then the city, 10 years from now goes, we have a different design, we're gonna put a swirl or something. Cool.
Is there a problem not putting it in the center, like, an engineering problem, not putting it closer to the center?
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
Or if it was 10, if you said a 10-foot, I mean, you walk it, the city plows it, you can't plow a six-foot. How-
Not with any plows at the city.
It's just a sidewalk plow.
It's a sidewalk.
That's what they use anyway.
I'm totally, I'm totally confused. I gotta say, I'm just confused. So, you know, I know that land. I've walked it. I remember way before you lived there, not quite so sure which, where I was supposed to walk, so you just walk right down the middle.
That's where, if you look, there's a treaded path. Right, that's the path.
Yeah, you could just walk down the middle.
Makes sense to me.
But what I'm not understanding on this is, you've got the right now to build a fence or put plannings up on your land-
On my prop-
24 feet from your house.
Right.
And then you've still got this right-
30-foot, five?
And the folks next door can do the same thing if they want, or they can leave it be. They're not being protested against. They can leave it be. So I'm not quite so sure why we are discussing putting a pedestrian path when you already got one.
Because the people can just walk around the other side of the tree, the limits of the 35-foot easement.
No, no, no. But that's what I'm not understanding. This, Steve, where I mixed up here, is if you come out 24 feet from your house, where that, where that trashcan is.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. That's not the easement.
Right. Goes right along here.
So you could build, you, you could build-
I could build a fence there 24 feet.
Okay, you could. And, and not-
Theoretically, in easement, you could plant trees out in easement, and-
Right, right.
Descriptively define it, but the city doesn't have to honor that. They could say, hey, we don't want, our easement's 35 feet wide, your trees interfere with it.
Right. But, but Mike-
The easement over here, by the way, comes over here.
No, I know, his does. But on your side, if you built, if you built a fence, an eight-foot fence, now that we know, or trees 24 feet from your house.
Yeah.
They can't go on the other side of the tree.
They can't go on my property, no. They can't go on my property. The problem is, putting an eight-foot fence, even if it's not on a 24 feet away, when you've got 35 feet wide that you're not using, that you never will use for pedestrian easement.
Yeah, yeah.
Seems ridiculous.
So, okay. So my other question is, what's the cost to the city on all of this?
None.
Nothing, yeah.
They're not building anything.
There's no cost to the city?
No.
So is your proposed easement the green, say, the center of the green line, for argument's sake? You're not saying to move it all the way over into the Katz's driveway?
No, 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 no. It's right down the center. We tried to stay as close to the center as we could. When it gets down to the southern part, it takes that dip towards the, yeah. Which is interesting, because right where that arrow is, where that hand is, if you move it up, yeah, that's wetland, once you get over there, beyond my easement. And when you get down to the end of the cities, right where that little triangle where it hits the Northwest Bypass, where there are no lines, yeah, further down, yeah, that's all wet. That's wetland. City has wetland there.
Okay. Can you go back to that other screen? So, again, just argument-wise, let's say the easement is roughly on the green line-
Yeah.
Next to the driveway and then bounces out, right?
Yeah.
That's what you're saying would be the-
Rough center line.
Rough 10-foot, the 10-foot wide.
That's where it'd be located. That's the middle of it.
To go through. So, again, to Teresa's point, that it's just an easement, it's not, to the, to the naked eye, it's not a pedestrian easement, 'cause there's not a trail there, or a path there, or, I mean, there is, you can see where people walk through it, but it's not like a swope trail, or it's not like a, a trail system. So are you proposing to put a trail on there to define it, or?
All we were proposing to do is have the city tell us-
Just tell us where-
A 10-foot path that's near the center line, so that both of us can do plannings not so close to our home, and have keep protesters, or anyone else who's offended by me, or my neighbors, have to be farther away. That's it.
Okay.
Well, my only other question, though, is having walked that a lot, I always feel, frankly, more uncomfortable about your neighbors than you.
'Cause you're so close. I know.
Right. But what it looks like to me is you're moving it, by putting it where that green line is, it's getting closer to neighbors.
Actually, the neighbors designed it. I was fine with wherever they wanted to put the route. And that's, the route we have flagged out is that follows the center line. It goes, it varies from the center line a little bit to give them more privacy, actually.
Interesting. I always go a little more on yours, because I feel like I'm totally looking in there. I can't see into you, but I can certainly see-
Unless those black curtains have-
You should try harder.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
So, I'm not opposed to the 10-foot wide easement, or the walking portion of the path. Obviously, we can make sure that the easement for the utility allows us to grade as needed, to build it within that 10-foot. My issue is, how are we going to define it such that the public knows if there's no formal path there, so that-
Right.
When the protesters go out, suddenly we now have to have a police thing, and a bunch of people get arrested, rather than somehow notifying them.
Any thoughts on that, Mr. Dubree?
I, I don't think it's smart, even though you probably can plant in easement. Don't do it, you know, 'cause you eventually have to tear it up. So, by having a 10-foot wide definition, the only time the city would have to tear it up is if they had to somehow tear it up to fix the 10-foot, some portion of the 10-foot, or they had to go fix the water line. That's a lot less of a risk than defining it by us and my neighbor planting it and creating it.
Right. I guess what I'm saying is, I'm for it, but my issue is, how is the public gonna know if I'm walking out there from A to B, or I'm-
There's gonna be plantings most of the way.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to understand, because, and I am assuming at some point, the city's gonna have to have a sign, that this, we're gonna be responsible for putting some sort of sign in the beginning-
Eventually.
-to notify these people, because if you don't, they're not gonna know. They're gonna walk on the other side, and suddenly, now we've got a big newspaper article-
It'll be hard to, when I'm done.
-protesters got arrested, thinking they run public property.
So, so from a, from a, you know, a compromised position, if the, if our decision would be, say, hey, let's move the easement to a 10-foot, a 10-foot wide easement, put it in the center as opposed to, you know, the whole 35 feet, and require that it be delineated with mulch or with whatever, something like that. I'm sure you're not opposed to that.
I'm willing to contribute financially to the city building a pervious pavement path.
And have a path going down through.
Yeah. I mean, if the city wants one, that's cool. I think most of the neighbors would wanna pave one, but that's not my fault.
Yeah. David?
I don't, I don't mean to be terribly simplistic, but at this point, all I see here is that you're asking the city to tell you where they want their path.
Could you restrict the 35 feet to 10 feet, somewhere near the middle?
Give me 10 feet and go.
Well, no, I think it's a little bit more than that. I think the city's basically saying, we don't wanna give up the 35-foot pedestrian easement. We want access to the 35 feet completely, but I guess it's maybe our decision to say, we, we don't think, maybe we don't think that that's really realistic. We really only need 10 feet. And I understand why maybe they did 35 feet, I guess, but-
It was sloppy drafting error. I, I'm a land use attorney. I have never, I've done hundreds of subdivisions. I have never, I mean, the cities, different cities, some are only 20 feet, some want 50 feet. Everybody has different standards. This was just, in my view, poor draftsmanship, going, yeah, we'll give a pedestrian easement that's 35 feet wide. I mean, my God, you could put the Concord High marching band down the-
You made the point, and easement is not ownership.
Right.
So, for you to say, define your 10 feet, just tell me where it is, and you'll work with it.
Is 10 feet the right number? I mean, that's, again, that's-
Well, first, we have to ask.
So, I, I would say, here's, here's where, if I was to make a recommendation to the city council right now, say, 10-foot fa, 10-foot wide walking path, make sure that the utility easement has the right to do any grading in support of that 10-foot, within the 35, whatever's needed. That way, we don't have to, we're only defined in the walking surface as 10 feet. But I still think, I understand you're gonna plant it, but I still think there's gotta be some sign on each end initially that says, this is, the path is only 10 feet through the middle now, and everything else is not allowed to be, or else it's not gonna stop your problem. Because even if you plant on the 10-foot, the people who go out there are not gonna know. They can't be on the other side of the tree.
Got it.
And they're gonna go out there, and we're, like I say, we're all gonna be worried about it, no do shit.
Do you anticipate it being an ongoing problem?
I don't know. I'm just sorry. I have to ask.
In these, in these calm political times, everybody agrees with my views.
Some enterprising person figured this out and, and figured out they could do it, so, hey, good for them. But do you anticipate it being a problem going forward, or, I, again, I-
And that's, and that's what I say. I think if it's just a simple sign, this is something like, please stay between the hedges, that is the, you know, city's-
Private property.
You know, well, it's not, yes, it is private.
No, no, on his side.
Right. But, but the thing is, is what I'm saying is, is we define, stay between the hedges, that is the public access to this area or something. And just put a sign on each end. And, and that way, you've dealt with the 10 feet, you've got the ability to grade as needed, to build it when we decide to, if we ever build it. But in the, in the beginning, just to make sure everyone understands it, there's some sort of signage.
Okay.
That's, I guess, where I'm going.
Now, just things for councilors, Steve, to consider. You, I hear a lot about, we have two utilities in that 35 feet, planting of trees. Our own site plan regulations are 10 feet from utilities. And you are far more familiar with the league language, but while the city may just be able to rip them up if they need to, it would, in an emergency situation, would delay and add cost for the city. So I, you may want to make sure that you have that ability within that utility easement, 'cause it would be an obstacle for the city. And then also consider the, as you said, they come down there, they plow this area, you might have maintenance access on the sewer and on the water, that may make that area seem a lot wider, especially if your sidewalk easement does not overlap on those utilities.
Do we know in the easement where the utilities are? Can we put a-
It doesn't show on the plan, so I'm not certain.
I mean, I'm inclined to say that we put the pedestrian walkway right over the, right over the, you know, it'd be silly if we had the pedestrian walkway there, and then the utilities were way over, almost to the bottom there, or something like that. I mean, it-
Almost, I think we have a plan somewhere that shows them, but I think they're almost down the center. I mean, that's how they sort of built it.
Probably 10 feet apart down the center.
I would guess they would be, yeah.
I don't know that for a fact.
Okay. So, again, we're not gonna, yeah.
I was gonna just ask, finally, about the 10 feet, 'cause I think you were asking about that.
Yes.
Just to back in with staff, based on the concerns that they had, we were all talking about six feet. Now we're talking about 10 feet.
Right.
I, I wanted to know, is, is that, are we at the right number with 10 feet?
Yes. That is the, if you're talking like a multi-use path, that is what FHWA, Hampshire DOT and stuff, use as they, kind of the minimum standard for, like, two bicycles to path, on a path. I know that's not a path enough, but if you were to build it, that's what they like to see as a 10-foot for, like, a shared use to allow multiple, not just walkers, which would be a six-foot.
Yeah, okay.
What's a normal sidewalk?
Between five and six. The absolute minimum is four. Our city regs is five from the back of the curb.
Yep.
Two snow machines. You could start promoting it as a snowmobile trail. Kidding.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Sir?
Jeff is right. 10, 10 feet is a pretty, pretty common width for a path. I, I think the concern for us is planting trees too close to a, to a water line.
Yeah.
And, and the roots tend to, over time, wrap around the pipe, which we don't want. And, and then if there, if a formal path does go in, and it needs to be, the path needs to be leveled out, then there is gonna be a cut, which is gonna take away some of the frost protection. So we need to find a profile that would, that would keep a few feet of cover over the water line to keep it from freezing in a, in a hard frost.
Okay. So we're not, you're not proposing anything now as far as a finished path for a cut and a fill path? Or trees? I mean, we could, shrubs, low, low shrubs.
So, Peter, if I'm understanding you, what you wanna see is an actual engineered path that either proves or disproves the need to cut over the water line before engineering is gonna be comfortable with the final location.
Right.
Remind me what the code is for coverage over the water lines?
I think it's, it's at least five feet.
Right.
It's five and a half feet.
Five or six, yeah, okay.
Yes. Little blue dot up there, is that a homeless encampment?
Uh, no, that was further out on the water line. That's a little treehouse that was built there by the previous owner.
Okay.
Which I did have one homeless person a couple of years ago, but he left peacefully. By the way, across the street, on 126 acres, there are two homeless camps, but I've given both of those individuals permissions. They've actually built homes, because they're pretty neat, and they take care of their waste, and they haven't brought in anybody else. I call one the Hermit of Rattlesnake Hill. He greets the runners that go by every day, and we just had to speak to him. I have another police, and he and the other people have a sign up saying, this is our home. It's a couple. Down on the lower end, right behind Shub, we had a group of about 10 that we had to get the city to move out, and then spend a lot of money cleaning up. But these two are pretty good, but there was a homeless camp. I found, at night, I looked out back and I said, God, that looks like a light in that little treehouse. And it was. But they're gone.
Okay. Other comments, questions, concerns?
One, excuse me. Has the city heard anything from the neighbors, the people next door, or any of the neighbors?
They, I, I polled every single one of the neighbors, and they were unanimous in supporting the definition of this.
So we got no opposition? I don't think there was no opposition letters. So, our piece of this is, is recommendations to city council, not here and decide it. And again, it's, you know, at the, at the recommendation of the board, that's one person or one, one piece of the puzzle here, and all the people that are gonna weigh in on this, and then city council make the, make the decision. But what's our, what's our thought process? Matt, you were gonna say something.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, if you're a municipality, why wouldn't you try to keep Yeah, I was just gonna say, if you're a municipality, why wouldn't you try to keep as far, something like this as far away from both properties as possible, which would be the center line? I mean, I don't think, I don't know why you wouldn't treat your, your residents that way, unless there's a reason not to.
Who else? So am I, uh, am I reading the room correctly and saying, yes, Teresa?
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Let's assume you don't have any protesting, that you're this wonderful guy that everybody loves, and nobody's gonna protest against you.
I'd probably be careful, I shouldn't do that re, lease to the reproductive rights organization, right?
Anyway, would you be proposing this without that?
Yeah, I just think it makes sense.
Because to me, the.
Because there are a couple people who use it, and they let their, you know, and they have the right now, their dog can defecate on what is, sort of be the lawn we use, and there's, you know, most of my, none of our neighbors on our street, but everybody uses it.
I was just concerned that this was press setting, that anytime anybody in the city has issues with other people protesting, et cetera, but the real question I was asking you is, you would propose this even if nobody come out and then protest?
I just think.
Yeah, yeah, you think it makes common sense.
The city has an easement, and, you know, it's a very interesting discussion, what rights are conveyed by a utility or a pedestrian easement? And, I mean, a long time ago, I litigated one where somebody had, had built a structure on one, I was on the municipality side, it was pretty clear, you can't put a structure on it, because you have to destroy the structure to get to the underline. That's why, interestingly, in Capitol Plaza, if you read the right of passage, even though there are city utilities that go right down that, the city expressly gave the right to put a building on that. Now, if they hadn't knowingly done that, then you could say, well, you can't put a building on top of our city utilities, but in the very right of passage, they conveyed the right to build it. So, like, we've been having this debate about how we limit that, I've said, great, all I need to do is close that in with a building and solve that problem. Normally, nobody would allow a building on top of a utility easement.
They figured that out with Phoenix Hall, Phoenix Avenue.
Yeah, I actually, the easement, not the easement, the right of passage to Capitol Plaza, I drafted in nineteen eighty-three. I did that project for Capital Bank with George Apostolakis, a long time ago.
Okay, um, and again, I, I, I'm open to whatever's, whatever people are thinking, but again, if I'm reading the room right, um, recommendation that we move the, uh, move the easement to the center line, uh, and reduce it in width from thirty-five feet to ten feet.
For the pedestrian only.
For the pedestrian, for the physical pedestrian portion of that. So we have a thirty-five-foot municipal easement for utilities that remains exactly the same and won't change, the part that will change would be the pedestrian access point being ten feet on the center line of the thirty-five-foot easement.
Clarify that.
With the, with the understanding that there's some, uh, landscape not planting, landscaping that will delineate the area a little more subtly, um, signage that could go in to say, you know, this is, this is where you can walk. Um, and then future development of the ten-foot wide, uh, path is up for negotiation. I mean, I, I don't know that you need to change anything now, right? I mean, you don't need, if you got ten feet, and it's accessible, it's ADA compliant, um.
And the other concerns that Peter had mentioned.
But that will only, the, the concerns Peter had are only gonna kick up if we, if we finish it off and put a, and put a, a path in there.
Not necessarily, because if we've already defined the path, and in order to make that location ADA accessible, we need to cut, now it triggers his issues.
But do we need to cut?
We don't know. We don't have an engineer plan, that's what Peter's saying, if we had an engineer plan that proved a viable, constructible path, that did not require the cut, Peter'd be on board.
So it's a pedestrian access.
I'll come back, I'll go engineer a plan.
Yeah.
By the way, I know, I get that, and it's not a plan the city's ever gonna build, I suspect, but I will go get an engineer plan, spend more money on it, either that or just call it, sell the damn property, move. It's easier.
Okay, so, again, language-wise, before any work is done, we, we need to figure that out, the engineered plan piece of it.
You, um, you may have had it in your wording, but if the walking path is ten feet, and that is what the pedestrian easement, the remaining twenty-five is now just simply a utility easement, you may need to consider adding slope, the remainder to be a slope easement or something to allow for that constructibility.
Right, within the thirty-five-foot utility easement, to allow for any grading.
Slope.
To facilitate the construction of the ten-foot wide.
Okay.
That way, you're not restricting it, because if you need to fill, you're putting more cover with utility, you won't, wanna suddenly say, well, you can't do that in a utility easement, because now you shot yourself in the foot.
Okay.
Yeah, and if you want ten feet wide, and you have to build it up or cut it, you're gonna have to slope it.
Yeah. Okay, good point. Yes, Teresa.
Last question, um.
No, it's the last, the last.
It's the last, last question.
Would you feel comfortable with us waiting to make a recommendation until next month?
Sure.
Because then you.
We're gonna go, we're gonna go show you we can get to the cut and fill, or.
Yeah, so when you come back.
Happy to.
If you come back with that, because what I'm thinking, then we've got the city on board, then everybody's happy.
Mr. Chairman, I'll answer that, I don't think they need to come back to us. I think if we say they satisfy engineering with that plan, we recommend to the city council, here's what we said, ten-foot wide path in the center, with the remainder having a slope easement as needed, satisfy engineering, we're good. I, I don't think we need to look at it and say, yeah, engineering, we agree or disagree with you that it's ADA accessible, because that's really the remaining issue.
We don't know anything about that, I mean, in theory, some of us don't, most of us don't.
What I'm saying, I think that's really where it's at, I don't think he needs to come back to us, I think if, between now and next month, if he wants to try and sit to the city council next month, and between now and then, he can satisfy Peter and engineering, then it can go in front of the council next month, it doesn't need to come back to us and delay it.
It, it will come back to you anyway, because, because it was a condition of approval of the, yeah.
But, but the city council's gonna have to say, yes, we agree, it's gonna have, then they'll come back.
To, to her point, so you'll, you'll see it again, just as the, as the amendment application.
I just don't slow it up going to the city council enough, because I don't think we need to.
Council talk.
Yeah, I think with that wording, my opinion would be that the city council would be comfortable approving something like that.
Yeah.
With the, with the, with the concept that, uh, engineering needs to sign off on it.
What's the, what's the pieces and parts that need to be, need to be done here, and it looks like it was sent to everybody, so, community development, planning, or T-PAC, uh, I think I saw Parks and Rec on there, a couple other things on there, is, anybody, are you in front of?
Easy to do a little easement in Concord.
Are you in front of anybody else, or there's no other, there's no other obstacles to this?
Parks and Rec is taking a nap, uh, in February.
Who is?
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec.
Yeah, made it on the third Thursday of every month.
Their, their, their purview's gonna be a little different on walking and accessibility.
They're probably trying to clean for what.
So the engineered plan, if you can do that, I think, then that satisfies all the, all the parties. So do we need to formally make any type of a recommendation?
Yes, that, that would be good. A motion in a second.
So, uh, using, Jeff, can you, can you craft yourself a motion?
Make a recommendation to approve the narrowing of the pedestrian easement to ten-foot wide, centered on the thirty-five-foot wide, with the remaining parcel of the thirty-five-foot easement allowing for any grading that needs to be wa, mainly for future construction of said pedestrian walkway, and provide a, a plan to engineering proving that it can meet ADA requirements without affecting the existing utilities negatively.
Good with that?
Anything like that, is that?
That hit all the, I think that hits all the pieces.
He's like throwing it out there. He lost it, I had him a hello.
Yeah, I, I lost about halfway through, but.
Counsel can clean it up.
Yeah.
Steve.
Yeah, I'll sec, I'll sec, I'll second that. Second that motion, yes. So we got, we got on the table a, a motion and a second, we can do some discussion.
Signage, some sort of signage.
And some signage, I don't know that we want to address the landscaping.
No, no, I think that'll be something that can be dealt directly with the city.
So maybe wayfinding, you know, just, just a little wayfinder, say, path here or something like that.
Henry, you have a.
I was just gonna say.
Turn my back to you, sorry.
Again, they're gonna have to submit an amendment subdivision application, so all those things be included in the path.
I just want the city council to understand that we recommend some sort of signage in the beginning, just to clarify to the public, there's been a change, because if not, I would know, I'd walk out there and.
Walk down the driveway.
And he'd be like, get the hell off my property.
Well, I just, if they step one side, that's why we got the bird shot ready.
Who made the second?
Uh, I made the second, and then open, or, let's have Amanda make the second, and then.
No, it was Matt, I was pointing at Matt.
And then open for discussion, uh, Dina, sorry.
Oh, no, I didn't have it, I was just commenting on the signage.
The signage, okay, sorry.
I was just saying that, yeah, I wasn't aware if, uh, our PAC or all the committees, are you aware, have all the committees heard this, or?
No, and we actually, when something's on the agenda, you don't get, here you get notice if you're an applicant, but you don't get notice.
Yeah.
So like, we weren't, like, for example, we knew it was gonna be referred to the different committees, but we didn't get notice that it was, when it was going to T-PAC. And so I'm glad to hear we're going to Parks and Rec or whatever.
Yeah, I, I believe, I believe it's February.
Okay, great.
Because I'm on that.
I'm not coming, I'll send somebody, not that I don't like Parks and Rec, but I'm gonna be out of the country.
Comment was just what.
And then there may be others, who knows?
It's, we have, we have a recommendation, but there'll be other recommendations.
Yeah, that's right, it's not just us.
The council will probably, will probably not hear this until they get all of the.
Right, all the parts back. That's what I said, whoever else is gonna weigh in.
Right.
And, and give feedback.
Right.
I'm sure Matt Walsh and the team will be pulling all that together, so.
This is a great case study in how to narrow an easement.
Yeah, so we got a motion on the table, and a second on the table, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, that motion carries, so that'll be the recommendation.
Sorry, it's a little late, you guys.
Yeah, kept us to eight o'clock, we were ready to go for seven twenty, we're gonna say.
Seriously, I've been appearing here since nineteen seventy-eight, and sat through a lot of long nights, I've never seen you guys out before nine o'clock.
What was the one we did a few months ago, twelve minutes?
We did twelve or fourteen minutes.
Really? The Woodburn administration turned a corner. He, he heard the people.
Okay.
It's not the dry poultry.
Do we, uh.
Yeah, it's not the dry.
Do we have any other legal business that comes before the board tonight?
How about some illegal?
We do not.
We do not.
I would make a motion to adjourn.
I've got a motion to adjourn, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, we are adjourned.